Okay, good evening. Welcome to our meeting, August 10th, Monday night, the meeting of the City Council of the City of Pacifica. Before we start, I wanted to inform everyone that this meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N-25-20 and N-39-20, which suspend certain requirements of the Brown Act, and pursuant to the order of the Health Officer of San Mateo County dated June 17, 2020, as this meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct necessary business and is permitted under the orders as an essential governmental function. It is not physically open. City Council members and staff essential to this meeting will be video teleconferencing into the meeting, and there will be no physical location open to the public. The public can observe and participate in the meeting while sheltering at home via the Zoom link provided in the agenda, or by phone to the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda. This meeting can also be observed on local TV Channel 26, or online at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream. So for this meeting, live verbal comments can be made through participation via Zoom. For members of the public participating by computer or smartphone using the Zoom link in the agenda, use the Raise Hand button to indicate that you wish to speak on an agenda item, or during oral communications when I call upon that agenda item. For those participating by phone, use *9 or asterisk 9 to raise your hand and request to speak. The city clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time and unmute you to talk after calling you by screen name or the last digits of your phone number. So be listening for the last digits of your phone number if you're calling in by phone. You will then be prompted to speak and allowed up to three minutes, or the time imposed by the mayor's discretion. Please clearly state your name for the record as part of your public comment. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting. Written public comments received by 4:00 PM will be made part of the written record, and will be provided to City Council prior to this meeting and posted to the city's website on the Council Agenda's webpage for public reference. Emails will not be monitored for public comment during the meeting, so if you wish to make a public comment during the meeting and have not submitted a comment by 4 o'clock today, please participate via the Zoom link provided in the agenda, and it's also available on the city's website at www.cityofpacifica.org. I don't think I have to go through the rules of decorum, but please let us all be civil, no name-calling. When we do call for an agenda item, please be sure to raise your hand in a timely manner. Don't kind of wait towards the end, or else you may get skipped if we decide to end that because we don't see your hand raised. So that's a good rule of thumb. As soon as your agenda item comes up, or oral communications, raise your hand right away. With that, I will go ahead and move to roll call.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Councilmember Butterlust.
Here.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here. Okay, we will have a salute to the flag led by myself. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Is there anyone on council that would like to pull any of the consent items? Mike, I see Mike's hand raised, and I can't see Councilmember Butterlust, so if you are raising your hands, just do it verbally. Okay, so Mike, you're on mute.
Sorry.
Sue, are you going to be on video? Sue Butterlust? You're on mute.
I will try to be on video for a while.
Oh, okay, that's all right. I just wanted to know so I could either call you by name. So, Mike, you raise your hand.
I just had a quick question in regards to the Cabrillo planting thing out in front. It's kind of, how is there going to be plants in there, since I don't believe they have a budget for putting plants in there? Is there any word on how that's going to be done, so we don't have this empty dirt?
Which item was that, Mike?
Consent item, let's see, for the Cabrillo school, it's on.
Item 8.
Item 8, yeah.
So before we ask that question, I do see a hand raised, so let me see if Lynn Shimamoto, I think it is, maybe saying that wrong, Lynn Shimamoto has a question about an item on consent that would be item 1 through 10. Okay, looks like Lynn's hand just went down, so it's probably not on that item. So can I have a motion for the consent items? Or Mike asked this question?
I just had a question, okay.
I move to approve the consent agenda except for item number 8.
My second.
Roll call.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Butterlust.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And the consent calendar, except for item number 8, passes with a vote of 5 in favor, 0 opposed.
Okay, so I think we have Public Works Director Lisa Peterson here.
Yes.
Mayor Martin, I was gonna chime in, but since Director Peterson and Deputy Director Batista are on the line, I don't want to repeat ourselves, so I'll let Director Peterson begin.
Yes, thank you, Lisa Peterson, Director of Public Works. Yeah, so to let you know, we do have budget for the planting. The planting has been delayed until the fall specifically because there is no irrigation that's going to be in that planting area. So the plants, in order to start, to really get them rooted and going, we need the rains that are going to be coming in the fall, so the planting will happen in the fall. And so that's the reason that you don't see any plants in there right now, and it may be that the city engineer, Batista, wants to add something more.
Thank you, Director Peterson. In addition, the Beautification Advisory Committee is also looking for sponsors to take care of those planters. So, once we do that planting, DAC will be looking for sponsors to look for people to help volunteer and maintain those planters.
Okay, all right, thank you. It just, we were voting for it to be completed, and it looked incomplete. Thanks. So I move that we approve item number 8.
A second.
Can I have a roll call vote?
For item number 8, Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Butterlust.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And agenda item number 8 passes with a vote of 5 in favor, 0 opposed.
Okay. We will move on to oral communications. For those on the Zoom meeting, please raise your hand now using the Raise Hand function if you'd like to speak on oral communications. This is an item that is not on the agenda.
Okay. We will hear from... Good evening, Council. Elizabeth Brooks here, Deputy City Clerk. First, we will hear from user GalaxyNote9, if you could state your name for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me. Hi, this is Cheryl Dickinson. I'm a resident of Pacifica and live in Lindemar. And I've called in a couple times, and I'm just going to keep on, keep on truckin', hoping for some change around illegal fireworks. I appreciate some of the comments that were made after some discussions in previous meetings, but a lot of times the answers are, well, we had a task force and we made some positive changes, or, oh, everybody had bad fireworks. But I'm here to tell you that we basically have fireworks every day and every night since 4th of July and before 4th of July. It's caused harm to my dog who just had surgery. It's very disruptive to my life and our community. But it's even more concerning because of the fire danger, and just the neglect of how people are using them. I heard, you know, of all kinds of stories. There was the Pacific Manor event where they actually, you know, hurt properties. There was some people lighting them off at San Pedro Terrace, or San Pedro Shopping Center, and they literally did start fires that people put out. And I just asked the City Council to please, please, please get a task force around ending illegal fireworks. The first task force did do a lot of good for social ordinances and such, but it was more measured on an environmental level. And I think if we do start making some changes to how we're policing fireworks, we can certainly, you know, get this going in the right direction. I also want to thank Mayor Martin for your leadership, especially around 4th of July and closing the beach for 4th of July. That was really appreciated, and I just wanted to let you know that. So those are my comments for this evening. Please, please, please help, and illegal fireworks specifically in the front of Lindemar. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Next, we will hear from Tiger Jazz Big Stick.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I am Tiger Jazz Trolls Big Stick of Pacifica. Really, all I want to say right now is a really big heartfelt thank you to Lorenzo Hines, who will be shortly leaving us. I've had the opportunity to email him. I've had the opportunity to briefly see him in person as I was around the City Hall area, but I want to publicly one more time just give a little more adoration to somebody who I've had the opportunity to spend years watching getting our financial ducks in a row in such a manner that, as I watch what he does, it almost looks like wizardry to me. It's at times magical watching him, you know, I mean, seeing him improve our credit score the way it happened is in and of itself an incredible accomplishment, but seeing him there with numbers and explaining an entire city budget, how it is we might ever find somebody who will be able to rise to the occasion the way this gentleman has, I'm not entirely certain, though I'm confident our city will be able to attract talent as we have before. Nonetheless, knowing that the talent we currently have been enjoying is moving on to bigger and better things, on the one hand, it's, I feel nothing but happy that he gets to enjoy the next phase of his career, which I have no doubt will be just as spectacular. And on the other hand, I am sorry to see such an amazing person go, who has done so much good for our city, and to not belabor it too much more, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Hines, and thank you, Council.
Next, we'll hear from Suzanne Moore.
Suzanne Moore, retired nurse practitioner, former task force member, current board member of Healthcare for the Homeless and Farm Workers Program, member of Pacifica Housing for All, and speaking tonight in my own capacity. During the July 15th special council meeting on motorhome permits, I found myself asking, is the majority on council listening? There are several recent episodes when you have not, not to the majority of attendees at November's Task Force Forum in which 70% supported a safe parking program before an oversized vehicle ordinance is enforced, not December 9th, when the task force presented your report you requested, and council did not agendize it until July 15th, not in January, when in spite of many an opposition, council implemented the ordinance, not in March, when COVID halted public debate and council chose to let the ordinance take effect March 30th without public input, not to the county, who through Chris Hunter of Supervisor Horstley's office offered help with a safe parking program, council moved forward and council ignored the offer, not to experts serving the homeless in our county who in position statements support safe parking, or to the Pacific Resource Center who drafted a solution after feedback of limits chosen by this council, and not to the 50% of callers to the July 15th meeting who supported the PRC pilot. I would have thought this council would not need to be reminded that we are in a pandemic surge with a second wave expected in our flu season. Your oversized vehicle ordinance has unintended consequences that put public health at risk, and you are not addressing an urgent problem of your own making. Safe parking would provide hygiene surfaces, services, temporary shelter, and case management for stable housing to Pacific's homeless, who are five times more likely to become exposed and critically ill from COVID. Safe parking will reduce displacement and facilitate COVID tracing. Safe parking gives expanded public health protection to the benefit of us all. Safe parking will save lives. Here are the options verbalized by this council that deserve urgent attention. Lease five spaces from the San Francisco Recreational Vehicle Park. Collaborate with Daily City for safe parking at Muscle Rock. Waive permit fees for private hosts. Wait to enforce the oversized vehicle ordinance until a safe parking program is in place. This council has failed to do its work. I appeal to your duty, to your efforts to slow the virus as supported by your homeless experts, to your sense of legacy in this time of pandemic, to your leadership to make difficult decisions when it's required, and yes, to your compassion for those residents at risk for displacement. A member on council spoke of division or dichotomy as community members spoke of compassion. Compassion doesn't divide, it unifies, heals, and inspires. You are on council to serve us all. Please help. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Next, we'll hear from MJ Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is MJ Thomas, owner of Malaya Skid Studio and co-owner of Malaya Lash &amp; Ink in Pacifica. I'm also a native Pacifican, born and raised. I attended schools here, and I'm happily raising four children here. I love my city. Both my studios are licensed facilities with the State Board of Barbering and Cosmetology. Myself and my staff are licensed estheticians and are held to high sanitation standards. Since being able to reopen, we have invested in PPE measures, including face masks and face shields, thermal thermometers, EPA-certified disinfectants to be used to disinfect stations after each client. We are using medical-grade misters emitting hypochloric acid to add an additional layer of disinfectant, and we are working together to make sure each salon only has two to three technicians with staggering clients to maintain social distancing with minimal contact. Moving our practice outdoors and out of our licensed facilities puts us and our clients more at risk. The results we're looking for aren't going to come from the recent closures. That will in a very short time will present new problems. We need to enforce no gatherings outside of immediate households, and use facial covers extensively and enforce social distancing. What I'm asking my city is, what am I, and what are we supposed to do? In a predominantly women-owned business industry, how are we supposed to survive after already four months of not working, when PPE has been exhausted, SBA loans unattainable, and rent still being demanded from our landlord? Can you tell us what to do? Our hands are tied, and we're being thrown in deep water for an indefinite amount of time and expected to survive. I am asking my city and our police department to support us. Instead of treat us like menaces, help us split the difference. If the city appointed enforcement officers to provide a permitting process for our over 20 salons here to adhere to, it would give us an option to operate much like restaurants and other businesses with even more sanitary measures. We could thrive and adapt. Instead of paying enforcement citations, let us pay for inspections to make sure that our industry is adhering to guidelines. I'm asking if you can help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Lynn Adams.
Good afternoon, good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Martin. I'm so happy to meet up with you again. It's been a long time. I wanted to just update you on the Pacific Beach Coalition. Obviously, we have had to stop all our group cleanups because they draw too many volunteers, but we have established a new program called the Street to Beach Program, and we've invited volunteers to sign up for the Street to Beach Program, and we will offer them a bucket and pickup sticks. We've had over 240 volunteers, and some of those volunteers are families. And since Memorial Day, really the end of May, we've had 1,272 volunteers log time as of yesterday, removing 7,500 pounds of trash, and clearing 308 miles of trails. They've picked up 80,950 cigarette butts since Memorial Day, and they've logged in the Clean Swell app, which we ask people to log so we can kind of track what everybody's doing, they've logged 89,000 pieces, 819 pieces of trash that they've collected, but that doesn't really equate everything because some people don't use the Clean Swell app, so many other volunteers are adding lots more. So it's been a remarkable, remarkable thing of that quantity. Almost 300 balloons have been picked up since Memorial Day, and we think that it's so dangerous. I also wanted to inform you that we've had some groups go out. We've outfitted groups, small teams of people, to go out and clean a beach together in their social distance way, so we've had Lindemar cleaned up, Sharp Park, some streets cleaned up via that, and it's been a wonderful program. Also, I wanted to let you know that we have a paint-to-bucket contest happening. We put it up online on Sunday, and 50 buckets have been, all 50 buckets have been claimed, and are being painted. We invite you on September 19th to come cast your vote for your favorite one. At Sharp Park Beach, we'll have a display of all the buckets that are painted. Finally, I'd like to invite you and everyone else this month and next month until September 19th, when we do the Paint-to-Bucket final, to pick up as many cigarette filters as you can, from wherever you are, wherever you go. We have the butt blitz going, so I wanted to invite you to join us for that, and I thank you for your work, and I wish you well.
Next, we'll hear from Sunil Bhatt.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Honorable City Council, thank you for taking my call. This is Dr. Sunil Bhatt from Park Pacifica. I just wanted to point out some inconsistencies with last month's appeal of the wireless communications facility at Terranova High School. Based on the maps that Verizon presented, which I urge you to look at, which I reset to you, the areas in front of Terranova High School, as well as the area at the new, at the next proposed Redwood site are both marked as red and yellow, like the entire map area between Crespey and Terranova. Since these antennas will only reach 1,000 feet, you basically gave Verizon what they need to place these every 1,000 feet in that area and likely throughout our city. The Verizon lawyers said they have the right to use their utility poles. However, both the utility poles on the street, as well as those on private property, are owned by PG&E, and they have public utilities easements which allow utilities companies to access them. Their right is to produce the least intrusive remedy to give us better signal coverage. That would include the entire city, not just these 1,000-foot areas where they're trying to place these antennas. All these antennas or all these applications should be considered together and should be minimally, use the minimum amount of equipment required. We can place single or a few antennas in areas away from homes. By allowing these antennas close to homes, you are personally responsible for irradiating our citizens in their homes without their consent, and any harm that may come to them, you are also personally responsible for. A lot of your residents have exhibited concern over the health, and I understand that you cannot regulate based on the health. But there are two federal bills, one in the House and one in the state, that are trying to restore local control over WCF regulations. That's House Bill HRFIT 530 and Senate Bill S2012. I really encourage you to pass a resolution in support of these two bills, and as well as opposing the small cell rollout in Pacifica. While this isn't legally binding, it will show your residents and people in Pacifica that you do care about our health, and you do not agree or cooperate with this massive imposing of radiation onto us in our homes. Thank you very much.
Next, we'll hear from Lynn Shimamoto. Going to have to do something to allow Ms. Shimamoto to talk, if you could be just a moment. Lynn, you should be able to speak now.
She appears to have disappeared.
She's still on. I'm not able to unmute her, though.
Perhaps while you're trying to fix that, maybe you should move on to the next participant.
Next, we'll hear from June Kafka.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, dear members of Pacifica City Council, I would like to talk about Verizon small cells at Terranova and Redwood Way and other places that might possibly happen throughout Pacifica. My name is June, one house up and on the same side of the street about aesthetic, but mostly I'm concerned about health. The 4G small cell can easily be changed to 5G and possibly higher, once the city gives access to the location. I have had two types of cancer, Hodgkin's in the 80s, and battled breast cancer two times. One thing many people don't know is that the radiation can leave you with peripheral neuralgia. This is a tingling in the hands and feet that has no cure. I now have this. I support the California Coast Responsible Technology. They have said that there is another way. AT&amp;T already has plans for fiber optics in our neighborhood, with hubs 2,000 feet from most homes, increasing our data speed 20 times over DSL and cable. It will be five times faster and safer than 5G small cells. Let's keep radiation away from homes, babies, children, and adults. Vote no for the small cells on Redwood Way and in Pacifica. Respectfully yours, June Kafka.
Thank you, June.
Next, we'll hear from Steph Madrenin.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, City Council members. My name is Stephanie Madrenin, and I am co-owner of Malaya Lash &amp; Ink Studio, MJ's business partner. I also grew up in Pacifica, like MJ, and I wanted to add to everything that she said to you previously. As we know, as of August 2nd, personal service businesses in San Mateo County were ordered to shut... personal service businesses in San Mateo County were ordered to shut down. But I'd like to share with you some info to simply shed some light and create awareness to show our point of view. I believe that the safest place to do our services are in our controlled, licensed, regulated establishments, not outside in public where we're exposed to the elements. So there's a safety standpoint, scientific standpoint, and practical standpoint. Now, the safety standpoint is where we're enforcing strict protocols, where we're technicians, all licensed by the state, are completed training and wearing appropriate PPE. Our appointments are staggered to limit the amount of people. There's COVID-19 screening and intake forms set before the appointment. And we're also introducing additional disinfectants via ultralight volume fogger called hypochlorous acid that we make here in the studio. We also have a scientific and data standpoint where there is a case study that the CDC held where they tested everyone in Missouri for COVID. They tested the technicians and the clients, and zero people had positive tests for COVID. So I just want to clearly share information where there are things in science that are showing that we can work safely here in our studio. And as of last Thursday, August 6th, Health Officer Scott Morrow also stated that he has a great idea of what's causing the spread, and it's not primarily from barber shops, nail salons, or other businesses that were targeted in this most recent closure. So all I'm asking is that maybe we get some guidance. Maybe we have conversations where we can talk about some of our options, and we can work together to make it so that businesses do not close. Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Robert Bailey.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my name's Robert Bailey. I'm here in Pacifica. I didn't know how you were going to address that item number four. So I don't know if I'm going to be speaking over again. But I have had some personal experiences in which we, as Pacificans, have passed a resolution saying that we were going to keep our trails and pathways safe for people that come down. Well, I was walking by those motorhomes, and a person came out tweaking, busting out windows on all of the vehicles that were there. The other thing that happened is that I was coming down the same area between West Lane and Esplanade, and a person, two people, I should say, were arguing with each other in which, just as I was passing them, the lady comes and pulls out a machete to go after this other guy. To me, you are causing some unsafe deals there. And it was all because that used, that still is, as far as I know, the police department told me, is a bike lane. But because the city council cannot come up with money to continue to paint that line because of sand blasting that comes from the winds blowing off of those sand dunes, take and erase that, you have put in a sidewalk. Well, who's going to come along and sweep that sidewalk off when those sands start doing the same thing? And the ladies who come down with those, walking their kids or even in a stroller, they're going to have to go around those motorhomes that you're allowing to park there again into the street, causing another hazard. The second thing I wanted to point out was across the street from 100 Palmetto, in those other side of the sand dunes, you're allowing these guys to put up their temporary homes out there, encampments. These are where I see some of these guys coming out of tweaking. I believe from my own observation, these people are cooking meth in that area. And the reason why I say that is just last year, you guys sent out two debris boxfuls of people who are living there and left their junk. There's a sign that says no loitering or no trespassing, and you're still allowing them to put these encampments in. To me, it's unsafe. Somebody's going to get hurt. And I hope it's not me, because like I said, that machete was an eye-opener.
Thank you, Robert.
Next we'll hear from Anita.
Hello? We can hear you. Okay, perfect. Thank you. So I just want to thank the city and the community for your ongoing support while we continue to respond to COVID and its impact on Pacifica residents. Our office continues to be open to the community. However, we have limited when our office space is open to the public. So we are now closed to visitors Monday and Tuesday afternoons, Wednesday and Thursday mornings, and there's no change to our Friday hours. When our office is closed to visitors, we are always available by phone. We are doing currently a streamlined back-to-school program, providing backpacks, headphones, hand sanitizers, hand sanitizer and face masks, along with a Target gift card for folks to purchase school supplies when they need them. People can sign up by calling PRC at 650-738-7470, requesting services via email or our website at packresourcecenter.org, or by attending our grocery drive-through on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, August 12th, at the American Legion Hall, which is at 555 Buell. We'll be distributing back-to-school backpacks and supplies this Saturday. But if folks sign up afterwards, we will continue to help as long as we can. Groceries continue to be delivered to seniors and at-risk families bi-monthly. Others needing groceries are encouraged to attend the drive-through that I mentioned, which happens every Wednesday at the American Legion Hall. Again, that's 555 Buell. Folks who signed up in advance have a scheduled distribution time. Otherwise, folks can come anytime after 3:30, between 3:30 and 4:30, and we'll provide groceries as quickly as possible. I also just wanted to mention that we are still available to help with emergency financial assistance to help folks pay their rent. We have an online application to make it easier, and it's especially important given that the Moratorium on Evictions is currently expiring on August 31st. So we want to make sure if somebody is behind on their rent or concerned about how much they owe, we can help. I'm also happy to announce that we've hired our two unhoused-on-the-coast or UC outreach specialists. They started today and are in training. We hope to start doing some targeted outreach in Pacifica and along the coast beginning next week, and by mid-September, they'll be spending most of their time in the field. In the meantime, please call PRC if you meet somebody who's unhoused that needs assistance, and we can go out and try to figure out what we can do to support them. Lastly, the deadline to do the census has been moved back to September 30th, and all online phone and mail response options will end as of September 30th. So numerators will start reaching out in person this month to complete them. So if you haven't completed it yet, please do so by going to my2020census.gov. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next we'll try again from Lynn Shimamoto. Ms. Shimamoto, when I try to allow you permission to speak, I get a message that says the version of Zoom you're using is too old to allow you to speak. That's the problem I'm running into. I'm going to let the next person speak, and I'll confer with Krit Koffey about how to proceed.
Maybe she can try to dial in with her phone. Tell her.
Yes, City Clerk, can you provide the telephone information for the speaker to call in?
Yes. The dial-in information for the City Council meeting is the phone number 669-900-6833. So the phone number is 669-900-6833. And then you will be prompted for the webinar ID, And to raise your hand when you're calling in, dial *9 to indicate a raised hand.
Right. In the meantime, can we call on someone else?
Go now to Francesca Hamilton. Francesca Hamilton.
Hi there. Can you guys hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes.
Absolutely. Thank you for listening, Pacifica City Council and Mayor. My name is Francesca. I am a California State Board licensed esthetician. Estheticians perform waxing, eyelash services, and facial treatments. For the last month, I've been working at Malaya Skincare Studio. During that time, we have made extensive changes to our sanitation and safety protocols to make sure technicians and clients are safe. I have been wearing masks and face shields. We have staggered our appointments and closed our waiting area. We sanitize everything consistently and constantly. I am a homeowner. I am a wife. I am a mother. Not working at this point simply is not an option for me. I would like to be given the opportunity to work again. I cannot afford to continue to not work. I want to work inside legally. I want to, I do not want to resort to illegal operations in homes or in the shadows, as the vast majority of my peers have done. I'm hoping that the City Council and Mayor can advocate for us and fight for us to get the right to be able to work in salons again. Thank you.
Thanks, Francesca.
Go now to Marluna Yoga.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, City Council and Mayor. I am calling in because of the small cell installations are hopefully not going to happen. So I just wanted to bring a couple of things to, I don't know if all of you are informed or not about this, but I wanted to bring attention to one specific situation in Ripon, and this was in March 12th of 2019. The parents, so this is an article, and I just wanted to read it. Parents Blame Elementary School Cell Tower After Fourth Student Diagnosed With Cancer. A fourth child has been diagnosed with cancer at a San Joaquin County elementary school, and parents believe it's because of radiation caused by a cellphone tower. The towers are spread throughout the community, but it's this particular one that parents say need to go. "We had a doctor tell us it's 100% environmental, this kind of tumor that he has," said Monica Furelli. Her son Mason was the second child to be diagnosed with cancer in just three weeks at Weston Elementary. He was 10 years old and walked by this cell tower daily. "It's really tough," she said. "It's one of the hardest things that I've been through," said Joe Prime. Prime's son Kyle was the first diagnosed with kidney cancer in 2016, and two more kids were diagnosed this year. "It just seems like coincidence is no longer a reason for all this illness," Prime said. They believe it's the cellphone tower that's harming their kids. "Kids shouldn't be the guinea pigs, and we shouldn't be taking chances with the children's lives," Prime said. The district has had several tests done saying this tower is safe and meets federal regulations, but some families weren't convinced and hired an expert. "I wouldn't send my kids there at all. It's absolutely dangerous," said Eric Winheim, an electromagnetic radiation specialist. "Children are still developing, and their cells are still being divided. It's the worst possible time in their life to be exposed." He says it's not just the cell tower. It also transmits wireless frequencies. Instead of only going 300 yards like regular Wi-Fi, it can go 30 miles, he said. Parents want the masks removed, but the district won't budge. Parents say the district gets a kickback of $2,000 a month to have the tower for a telephone company, but the district so far has not commented. "It's real disappointment that it's taking moms of sick children and dads of sick children to come out and say something needs to be done," Prime said. Furelli's son Mason has also since relapsed and is undergoing brain cancer treatments, while a fourth child from the school has recently been diagnosed and taken out of school. I'm running out of time. You can basically find this on Google. But I just want to bring this up because I would hate for this to happen to our children. So thank you for considering.
Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Tiara Tanner.
Hello, thank you for listening. My name is Tiara Tanner. I've lived in Pacifica for five years, and I have a new baby that will be raised here as a Pacifican. I feel like many of our concerns about radiation from cell antennas close to our homes are going unheard, as these antennas are approved and appeals denied. While many people believe that cellphone radiation is not significant, it is recognized as a possible carcinogen by the World Health Organization's International Association for Research on Cancer based on an increase in brain cancer associated with cellphone use. Cell antennas produce much higher radiation than phones. Please join the numerous cities that are passing resolutions against small cells antennas and provide us with safer and cleaner options that exist. Thank you.
Thanks, Tiara.
Next we'll hear from Alexander Prasajny. We'll go now to Joanna Wang and return to Alexander Prasajny in a moment. Sorry, they just dropped off. We'll go now to Menelin P. Santos.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Hello, Mayor and Council members of Pacifica. My name is Menelin Canales Santos. I am a licensed esthetician in California at Malaya Skin in Weston, Pacifica. I'm adding on to MJ, Steph, and Francesca's statements. We followed our state and county guidelines for COVID-19, and we feel that we have stepped up our safety measures to ensure our client's safety is a priority. We are wearing masks, shield guards. I'm using disinfectant that's hospital-grade. The state North County has the data that shows increase of COVID-19 from within our industry. Please reconsider the steps we are taking on by how we ensure the safety of the people. Increase of COVID-19 does not correlate with our business and the industry we are in. Thank you for listening, Mayor and Council members.
Thanks, Menelin.
We'll now try again with Alexander Prasajny.
Yeah, I think I managed to unmute myself. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You can. Oh, good. Okay. Did you hear anything I said previously?
No.
Okay. Okay, then I'll start from the beginning. Thank you, honorable counsel. I am also calling about the Verizon applications and appeals and asking that you please do support US House Bill HR530 and Senate Bill S-2012. I also think that some of the nearby cities like Petaluma and Santa Barbara have already really done the work in, you know, providing the protective codes necessary that we could just kind of copy or communicate and coordinate with them. I'm hoping that City Council will choose to do that. I also wanted to say that during the hearing, the Verizon representatives talked about the signal being really well above the sidewalk and therefore in a safe range. But I think if you're in the flat Midwest, that might be the case. But look at the hilly Pacifica that we live in. I think the signals traveling between antennas, you know, from the high school up to Redwood Way, it travels right through, our townhouses have about 60 to 80 people living per yard. That signal's traveling right through here and through densely populated residential areas because we're on hills, and we need to consider that unique topography that's not necessarily going to be addressed by Verizon. And we need to advocate for ourselves and our citizens. And we need to advocate for ourselves, and I'm really hoping that the City Council will help for us, help us to do that. I do believe that was mostly what I had to say. I do support the AT&amp;T fiber optics or any fiber optics, you know, I don't want to, want to put a plug in for any particular company, but fiber optics are the way to go. And finally, I'd like to just make one more comment. I'm hearing, hear a lot of people in the, in the industry, the beauty industry, you know, nails and hair and so on, wanting to get back to work, and I'm fully in support of that. So I'd like to just put a plug in there for those people. Thank you so much for listening.
We'll go now to Joanna Wang.
Hi, honorable council members. This is Joanna Wang, Authorized Representative of Verizon Wireless. I am with Modus. I am representing Verizon on the projects related to the small cell towers or facilities that the residents have commented on. I know that this is later on in the agenda, but I did want to at least respond to one of the, what one of the members of the public earlier, one of the neighbors had read into the record regarding Ripon, California, and I am very aware of that scenario. And I think, you know, while Google is a wealth of knowledge and information available at our fingertips, you know, you, a lot of Google searches are not just what you see on its face, and that there are subsequent articles that have since come out regarding Ripon, California, reference water contaminated compounds in the water and carcinogen, known carcinogens that were in the school systems, the school water system. So while I can appreciate and acknowledge and understand the concerns related to self-site facilities, I don't want it to be misled based off that single incident that leads residents to believe that there, there are more things to be fearful about than the benefits that these services provide. Communication services are critical for every community, and I just want to, you know, follow that record and response up with the information. If you Google information about Ripon, California, you will find that the water in that area is contaminated and that, I would say that the protests from the parents were misdirected. Thank you.
Thanks, John. We'll hear now from Gretel Palacios.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Council. My name is Gretel Palacios. I'm born and raised in Pacifica and love this town more than anything. I want to add on what the lovely ladies at Malaya Studio have been saying. I am owner of Wave Salon here in Pacifica, and what we need is support. Our industry has spent thousands of dollars in PPP equipment to make sure that our clients and our staff are safe. We do hospital-grade protocols. We take temperatures. We wear our masks. We have hands and tights all over the salon, wash our hands, and we're only taking one client at a time. It is not our industry that is creating the problem. What we need to look into is such things as our beaches. Every weekend, the beaches are crowded with out-of-towners coming into our city and bringing in probably the virus themselves, parking all over residential areas, risking the residents in this lovely town. What we should do is close down the beaches and show support to the small businesses that have worked so hard to make sure that everybody is safe, so we can get back to work and support our families. So I ask of you, please stand by us and help us get our business back together, and let's shut down the beaches and keep this town safe as long as we can. Thank you.
Ms. Gretel? Okay, I don't see our friend Lynn Shamamoto back. And then if you're there, raise your hand, or are you 8421? Okay, with that, I will close public comments, and then we will move on to Council Communications. I cannot see every, all of our council members, so can just speak up. If you'd like to have some words. Any council members?
Don't quiet, I'll talk. Sorry.
Uh, Suvaras.
Okay. I attended several flood and sea level rise meetings. They didn't mention sea level rise too much. They were talking about creeks. So nothing to do with our ocean. The, every Wednesday, I attend the COVID-19 Elected Officials Information Briefing, and I think that's one of the best meetings because you get specific information every single time. I went to, I listened to the specific plan meeting that the Planning Commission had, and that was interesting. Plan B area 2050, I've been saying that they're going to increase our numbers for the regional housing needs allotment, and I'm starting to think that they may not increase our numbers so much because they are basing a lot of it on, on jobs and transportation, and we don't have either. I'm on the COVID-19 Recovery Council, which is a lot based on equity, education, and getting back to normal, and that's a really informative meeting. I would like to echo what Anita said about the census. It's so important that everybody sign up for the census. Young people, babies, people who are not documented, everyone should be signing up for the census, and the same with the San Mateo County Alert System. They're trying to do a creek flooding project where people are alerted if the creeks are gonna flood, and that would be all through the San Mateo County Alert System also. And lastly, Lorenzo, what can I say? I am gonna totally miss you. You increased our bond rating by, I believe, two steps. You've given us a transparent budget the entire time, so everyone knew what was going on with our budget. Your laugh is incredible, just incredible. I am going to miss your laugh. And during COVID, the entertainment that you provided, playing music and singing online, was amazing too, and that's the only time I ever got to hear you sing and play was, was online, and I'm totally gonna miss you. And, but I do wish you the best becoming a city manager. So thank you so much for everything that you've done.
Thank you, Sue. Mike O'Neill?
Hi. Be sure, yeah. Hi, how are, how is everybody? I do have actually something productive out of the airport roundtable, and that is Pacifica is going to be getting a second monitoring station, and the location is to be determined, and we will have it for approximately six months. So the issues that we have in regards to airplane noise and stuff will be documented, and we, you know, not that the FAA is gonna change anything, but at least they realize when they change the flight patterns, maybe they need to put the monitors somewhere else. So anyhow, I, it's gonna be determined, we're gonna be having some conversations about the requirements for what they need in order for the monitors to work, and then where the city has, because they prefer public property versus private property, just the logistics, et cetera, et cetera. So anyhow, so that was good news. And again, kind of like what Sue said, Lorenzo, okay? Anytime you went in there, there's a smile on his face, no matter how dire the budget numbers were. He always had a good word to say about everybody, and I think that, you know, he's gonna be sorely missed. He's turned, I was on the council PL, BL before Lorenzo, okay? And our numbers were really pretty not transparent at all, not understandable. I remember I went in asking to have this one report. We were getting explained to me, and I still couldn't understand it, even after 14 years in the school board, branch manager for bank, branch manager for brokerage firm, I still couldn't understand it. So what they did was they quit sending the report out, you know? And I just have to, and then they gave notice, so they're gone. But anyhow, Lorenzo's done a tremendous, outstanding job. I'm sure he will be a tremendous, outstanding city manager, and we are suffering a loss by that, but I do want to congratulate him. I think, you know, with the kids in college, I'm sure the raise will help, you know? You know, and everything, but he was always a pleasant face, always a smile, and just generally a real nice guy you should sit, you could sit and shoot the breeze with. So thank you for all you did, Lorenzo. You will be missed, and it's gonna be hard to find somebody to fill your chair, as you called it, the big chair, okay? So anyhow, thank you for all you did, Lorenzo. And I would also really like to encourage people to wear masks, even in Galt, you know, in the Central Valley there, you gotta be careful, Lorenzo, in the Central Valley there. It's a hotspot. But I really want to try to encourage people, and those that don't wear masks, try to show sympathy for everybody else, because you're protecting yourself as well as your loved ones and your community. So please, wear a mask. That's it.
Thanks, Mike. I'll go ahead. Mary Beer?
Yeah. Hello, everybody. I want to thank the people for coming out from the salon and letting us know, like, all the tests that you have taken to increase the safety in your businesses. I want you to understand that I really appreciate that, so thank you for that. I'm also wondering if, Kevin, are we gonna be having an update about the enforcement of the face masks, like in your, in your communications, or can we get one of those now?
Thank you, Councilmember Beer, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I, from over the weekend or last week, I'd have to turn to Chief Stidle in case there was any enforcement activity, but we, beginning last week, are pushing out the information about the change that the county made in, you know, creating this administrative citation process related to not just masks, but any health order violations. But emphasize that our, our preference and our process is, still remains one more of education, and as Councilmember O'Neill just eloquently stated, the societal beneficial reasons for following the health orders and emphasizing that politely and through education. But that if there are flagrant violations, particularly of businesses and groups, you know, flagrantly violating or shunning the health orders, that we are equipped to take enforcement activity. So I have not heard that we've actually taken any enforcement activity, but if Chief Stidle has different information, perhaps he can, he can chime in.
Greetings, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Dan Stidle, your Chief of Police. Yes, City Manager Woodhouse is correct. We have not taken any enforcement action. We have been given verbal warning to this point regarding violations that we see. We are targeting flagrant violations. We understand that this new administrative citation procedure that's as a result of the San Mateo County Urgency Ordinance is something that we're going to be enforcing. We're taking a look at flagrant mask violations. Again, we're not going down the road of stopping everybody that doesn't have a mask on and issuing a citation or a single warning. That's just not feasible. We're looking at groups, we're looking at flagrant violations, and we'll be doing the same thing with the businesses. These administrative citations have different, they have different parameters and requirements than the administrative citations we normally issue within our city. So right now, we're in the process of creating the forms that will be needed, such that when we issue those written warnings, and if we get to the point where we actually have to issue a written citation, that we'll have everything we need to do that.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. You know, I feel like it, we all feel kind of helpless, right? But one way that we can at least try to support our businesses in town is to, is to do what's right, wear the masks and to not gather in groups, and you know, so thank you for talking about that, because I think it's good for our community to understand what is happening and what's going on as far as, as that's concerned.
And Councilmember Beer, sorry, if I, if I may just add, because it's relevant to the comments received, is that the city is not making the decisions about what types of businesses are allowed to operate indoors. Those are decisions being driven by the state, and the county is now deferring to the state, and the county may disagree with some of the state decisions, but we're not in a position of making those decisions, and it's the stricter regulations between county and state that apply. So I want to make that clear.
I appreciate that. I was gonna ask you to do that too, so thank you very much. But you know, we can support our businesses by talking about like wearing masks and being safe. So the health and safety of our community, that's the very most important. I want to thank Lynn Adams from the, and continue to do work all through COVID. It's amazing how much work you guys have done. Thank you so much. I really appreciated the time off. I don't know about my fellow council members, but I really needed it, and I do feel refreshed, so I appreciate being able to have had time off. I had a meeting with the founders of the Social Unity Project, which is a, community members in town that are working, they're doing work around anti-racism and racial equity and reconciliation, and so it went really well. I am happy that I'm able to meet with them and to hear about all the important work that they're doing. There's some very motivated young people in this group of people, so thank you for all of that work. I attended a webinar on California's economic outlook. It was the most depressing thing I've ever seen. It was just, the information that's coming about, about the economic state of our, of our state is just, it's incredible how scary it is. And I don't know if Lorenzo was at that webinar, but I do know that I'm gonna say a few things about Lorenzo right now, because if Lorenzo had gone to that webinar and I came out of it feeling like I was feeling, he would be able to explain it all to me, because that's how good Lorenzo is. Like Lorenzo was able to explain higher budget to me and to help me understand it, and I think that is just incredible. I think that trust is a really hard thing to come by, and Lorenzo worked really hard to gain that trust of our communities, and he, he spent extra time meeting with community members and made sure that all of his work was transparent, that everybody understood, including me, which is a really good job. I could go on and on. I don't know. You guys should hear him sing. It's pretty amazing. Lorenzo, thank you. Thank you for all of your work. You have set the bar totally high for what we're gonna expect from the next person who comes into your position. I wish you all the luck in your new position, and I look forward to being your friend. So thank you. I think that's it for me tonight.
Thanks, Mary. Mary Burton-McMayer?
Thank you. I have a number of things to report on. I'll try to keep it brief. I did appreciate the break, Councilmember Beer, because it gave me more time to attend some webinars and meetings that I had been wanting to attend, or sometimes you sign up for them, and then they send you a link and you can look at it later. So I've been trying to focus on things that relate to business and how we can help our businesses in town. Understanding the bigger business environment is a good stepping stone to that, and working on a committee that the mayor asked if I would be able to attend some meetings. It's called the Silicon Valley Leadership Group Mayor Circle, and the focus of that, there are three meetings, and it includes all the way down to San Jose, all the way up into San Mateo County, and it's been a really enlightening process because I'm hearing from other cities what they're doing. And it's really interesting. I mean, to Suvaras' point about, we don't know what our arena numbers are gonna be, some of the Some of the people in this meeting have major corporations in their cities. So addressing, you know, the impact of COVID, when you're in Foster City, or when you're in Fremont, or when you're in San Jose, is a little bit different than addressing what we need to address in Pacifica. But it was very interesting to see the overlaps in terms of things like wanting to help businesses survive and thrive, helping them recover, what methods we can use to communicate, what innovation can we, can we utilize? And we're doing so much of the things that are discussed in terms of social media and, and adding additional messaging about wearing masks and all of that. There's a video that one of our staff members, Josh, just put out that I think you can find on the city's website. That's great to just reinforce those points. So my, my hope in doing this work is to just be able to get, you know, everything I try to do with Pacifica in mind, but involves something over the hill, is to get Pacifica on the radar. And the Silicon Valley Leadership Group did a little ad campaign around masks, which ran in the paper, the Chronicle, and I think it's gonna run in the San Francisco Business Times, where they asked you to recruit a CEO in your town. And, you know, we don't have Genentech, we don't have major corporations, but I told them, well, we're, you know, a largely tourist and visitor-serving industry. And so I was fortunate to be able to have Sylvain Montesier from Pacifica Brewery. And he submitted a picture of him wearing his mask. There's me wearing my mask. You know, we're just trying to keep getting that word out. I also attended that meeting with, not with, but at the same time as Councilmember Vatterlas, the ABAQ Plan Bay Area 2050 meeting. My intention there, again, is to learn what is the housing requirement going to be. But they're looking at transportation and water-related issues. And how are we gonna protect citizens and businesses in an era of sea level rise? What I found useful and helpful in, in attending that is that they're not thinking about us. I don't know if Councilmember Vatterlas, you know, would disagree, but she and I both were on the Q and A, typing in questions about impact of sea level rise on coastal communities and what they're factoring into their planning around that. Because what we were hearing about was B C D C. We were hearing about the bay, and we're hearing about the communities that are, you know, around the bay. And it's not that they're not important, but when we're talking about planning Bay Area 2050, we have to make sure, and it's just a challenge. I mean, we all know that. And it's something we kind of have to keep doing, keep doing, get our name out there, get ourselves out there and learn more. So the next mayor's roundtable, the final meeting, will be this coming Friday. So hopefully I'll have more to report back on that. And I attended the Pacifica Democrats' meeting and heard a very comprehensive overview of our Pacifica Police Department by Captain Clements, which was great. Lots of question and answer, very good discussion going back and forth. And beyond Pacifica, too, because it's really the Pacifica Daily City Democrats Club. So there were some Daily City folks involved as well. The next meeting of the Pacifica Democrat Day, Pacifica Daily City Democrats is this coming Saturday. And various people are gonna undertake a little brief discussion and presentation of state ballot measures, now that we know exactly which ones are on the ballot. And so to begin that process of really knitting what those are and what the impacts of them are. I think that's pretty much all I had right now, but, oh, I didn't want to give a quick update from the Beautification Advisory Committee. Actually, there'll be more information coming. There's a subcommittee of the Beautification Advisory Committee, which is the mural subcommittee, which involves beautification members, those that have volunteered their time to be on the committee. That also brings in outside members, so Cindy Abbott, who's not part of BAC, but is obviously very involved with art-related things in Pacifica, is part of that subcommittee as an example. And they are working with a group that I'm sorry I don't know the name of, that's presenting a proposal for another mural at the community center. It's very early, it's very preliminary, but more on that as it unfolds. It would be on the south side of the building. It's kind of near the skate park. Which, and it sounds like there's, they want to focus support about Black Lives Matter. And it's not clear how that message is gonna be translated into art, but more on that later. And there'll be some updates on the mayor's beautification awards and some recommendations. There's a subcommittee working on that as well. So that will be coming forward. And Lorenzo. Well, I really have to say, as a relatively new council member, it was extremely helpful to me to have Lorenzo's support and guidance. Lorenzo, you are a wizard. When Commissioner Big Stick asked, said, "I think it's wizardry." I think it is, too. But it's hard, hard-won knowledge and education and expertise. And I relied on it so many times because I know he knew how it works in Sacramento because of his previous job. When we're talking about economic development-related issues, he talked to me about Edmunds Washington, where he had one time worked, and what they did there, and how that might apply to what we could do in Pacifica. So he brought such a wealth of, of information and connections. He taught me a lot. I never thought I would need to know what a comprehensive annual financial report is, but the CAFR is a very important document for city government, very important. And Councilmember Beer and I went to a training about, like, I don't know, a month after the election, remember? When we first learned about CAFR? And then we have Lorenzo explaining it in a way that relates to our, to our specific situation. And to be able to make decisions when you're confident about the information that you have before you is a great relief. And I really am grateful to you. Thank you. I wish you well. I know it's gonna be a little hotter in other places, but carry on and please stay in touch.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Tembekmeyer. Really quickly, I want to thank the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission for taking on the equity in our surf permitting process. I've been attending those meetings, and I'm really impressed with the levels of details that you're going through. So thank you. Things are looking good. I think all parties are, continue to attend, continue to stay engaged, and including the, the people who are already on the beach. So that's, that's great. And thanks Director Perez for taking that on. And I look forward to continued positive movement on that front. Thanks, Chief, for giving us an update on masks. And I just want to remind everyone, please do not take law enforcement into your own hands. That is really important. We have a non-urgent hotline that you can call. You'll find it on our website. That is, that's probably gonna be your best bet. Right now, we're just asking everybody to take care of themselves, and, and that's the best we can do. And along those same lines, I do want to thank all of those that showed up tonight to talk more about what they're doing to protect themselves and their customers. And, you know, unfortunately, we may or not agree, but we are following what the county is doing. And the county has, you know, loosened up a little bit and said you can do things outside, which is great. So, you know, your hairdresser can come to your house and do it in your yard or whatever. But I understand that doesn't work for, for everyone. But we appreciate you staying engaged and staying on top of it. If we can find any little way to help you, we will. We're all on these meetings with the county. And we're, we're on your side, and we're just trying to figure out how we can, you know, keep everything moving forward. So, so thank you for your patience. I, I'm hoping that, and I, City Manager Woodhouse will talk very briefly about the statue, the Portalo statue, and sort of any progress that's going on with that. And then the other thing is to let everyone know that we are having our follow-up policing meeting on policing strategies and the Obama's mayoral pledge. I think it is the twenty-fifth of this month. Correct me if I am wrong, but it's coming up, so stay tuned for that. And then I also wanted to let everyone know that the skate park is undergoing a little bit of a facelift. We're getting a new fence, so be patient. I know everybody's out there using it, and that's really exciting. But, but stay safe. The, we had a red tide out a couple, the last couple of weeks. It's since cleared up. But just everyone, keep your eyes on that. I was feeling, not just a little bit, but a lot under the weather. If you were in the ocean, that can really affect your sinuses. So, so watch for that red brownish tide. I was affected this past week on that. It's cleared up. It looks good now, a little bit too good. So, and then the last thing I'd like to say is, thank you to Lorenzo. You have been amazing and great at your job. And again, like, this was my first time, and you made it so easy and understandable. Really, I wouldn't say enjoyable to look at budgets, but not painful. And you made me feel so comfortable being able to ask questions. In your head, you're probably like, "Oh, this ding, that," but now you weren't. That, that you didn't make me feel, you know, that I couldn't ask those questions because it was my first time. So I want to thank you for that level of comfort that you offered to me and that you seem to have offered to everyone. And, and I am super excited that you're gonna be a city manager because you're absolutely city manager material, and I think you're just gonna be great. So go get 'em. We're gonna miss you. But if, if, if we weren't happy for you, then, you know, we wouldn't be good humans. But we're gonna miss you big time, and nothing but love to you, Lorenzo. And we are here, so until we see you again. And City Manager Woodhouse, are we opening it up for Lorenzo now, or do you want to talk a little bit?
I was gonna make some comments, and then we'll open it up to Lorenzo.
Okay.
One other thing, unless you're gonna talk about it, City Manager, about the increased funds at the county level on, for renters and support for small, small property owners. I forgot to mention that.
Go ahead. I wasn't gonna mention that.
Okay, real briefly, as Anita Reese mentioned, the moratorium on residential evictions due to non-payment of rent because of COVID is expiring on the twenty-eighth of August. And the county Board of Supervisors undertook a number of items and dedicated $5.3 million to additional support for renters. They're, they added another $2 million into rent relief for tenants, $2 million into grants for property owners, for small property owners who are, who are affected by not being able to collect rent, so they can't meet their obligations to pay for their mortgage and upkeep on their properties. And $1 million is set aside for legal and advisory services so that agreements can be mediated between the parties in terms of paying back rent. The amendments they made to the, to the ordinance extend the time to pay it back. So that instead of it being, originally it was ninety days, and they had talked about taking a hundred and eighty days, but it is now a full year. And it's broken into two six-month increments. So there's some specifics about how the documentation needs to go forward and the process for paying back rent and having an agreement about that. They're definitely looking to create incentives for reducing that urban. But that has to be a negotiated thing, and there will be more information available at the Board of Supervisors meeting on September fifteenth. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I was gonna reserve most of my comments tonight to actually talk a little bit about Lorenzo, as all of you did, and, and then invite him to share some thoughts. But first, the, the mayor had asked about the Gaspar de Portela statue. And I don't have a lot to report on that, other than one of the first steps in any process related to the statue is to ascertain the ownership of the statue. So we are working with Caltrans, through Caltrans, with the State of California to determine ownership. Prelimarily, it, it looks like the state owns the statue, as well as it's located on state right-of-way. But that's the first step in determining any next step related to the statue. So brief report on that. But on to Lorenzo, that is Assistant City Manager Hines. And as the members of the public may have not heard, but tonight is his last formal Pacifica City Council meeting before he heads off to become the City Manager of Galt, California. And like the council members did, I just really want to publicly thank Lorenzo. Assistant City Manager is a critical role in the organization, in any local government organization. And Mr. Hines has been both the Assistant City Manager simultaneously with being the Finance and Administrative Services Director. So he oversees finance, and he oversees human resources, and he oversees our information services and technology functions. So being, this is a public meeting and recorded, I did just want to get into the record a short list here of many of the details, many of which, when it comes to administrative services, are not really publicly facing accomplishments, but they are critical to the organization becoming what the organization has become over the last six years, five to six years since Lorenzo's been here. In the, in the finance bucket, it was mentioned in terms of improving the development of our budget, leading our budget process, including the financial forecasting, the long-term financial forecasting, critical role, and vastly improved the transparency of our finances and our budgeting process, the fiscal prudence of our budgeting, vastly improved under, under Lorenzo's oversight. Additionally, the comprehensive annual financial report was mentioned. Complicated document, critical to organizations and to our bond rating. And that's another bucket in finance, increasing over the years our bond rating from A minus to double A plus, which, for those that aren't aware, those rating improvements help save Pacifica taxpayers money when we issue debt because we get a lower interest rate with a higher rating. In the human resources and IT bucket, number one, Lorenzo has led up our labor negotiations over the years. Very important, critical role. Has at one point even acted as our HR analyst when we had a one-person HR department. And has really, over the years, improved and focused on our succession planning in our finance and administrative services function. Key recruitments such as our new HR manager, our new IST manager. And concerning IT, really in recent years, bringing Pacifica from the state of sort of drawings on a cave wall to the modern age with IT. So we would, we would be having a much more difficult time in this coronavirus remote work situation, et cetera, if we didn't have some of the IT improvements that Lorenzo helped champion along with our great IT staff. So HR, IT, critical, but not to understate the Assistant City Manager role that is critical. So, you know, one of those roles is acting as a city manager. If I'm out of town, or sick, or out of state, et cetera, you know, that's a critical function. So thank you, Lorenzo, for me personally, for playing, acting city manager. for me personally, for playing, acting city manager. Also, as Assistant City Manager and all the other duties as assigned, Lorenzo has overseen our franchise relationship with Recology of the Coast and the setting of those rates over the years, a very important function to the community and to the environment. He has worked diligently as part of a larger city team on our cannabis business program related to the financial aspects of that program, as well as our short-term rental program, and overseeing our voluntary collection agreement with Airbnb, both the cannabis and the STR program have been critical in increasing revenues for the city as we diversify where we receive our revenues from, and also critically helping with our wastewater rates and our rate-setting process for wastewater, so those are in kind of more depth, a lot of the behind-the-scenes functions Lorenzo has helped with, so personally, it's been a real pleasure for me to work closely with Lorenzo and have him at my side, and I really appreciate his dedication to Pacifica, and broadly speaking, his dedication to local government excellence, and his broad experience, as well as his specialization in finance, and as has been mentioned, his great attitude and humor, so, you know, my goal is, is that Lorenzo's successor and how we handle the responsibilities of what he's leaving behind are, are going to just, you know, really build on his successes to, as they would say, to, to stand on Lorenzo's shoulders as, as we continue to be an exceptional local government organization, and Lorenzo's legacy is fantastic, incredible here, and he is ready for the city manager job in Galt, and I know he'll be visiting us, because when it gets really hot in the Central Valley, Pacifica is the place to come, except when it's during COVID-19, so, you know, this is the exception to that, but otherwise, come, but if you do come, wear your mask and such, so that's what I wanted to say from, from my head and my heart, and I want to give Lorenzo the floor a bit.
Can you all hear me? Very good, very good. First of all, thank you to Mayor Martin, Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer, Councilmember Vidalos, Councilmember Beer, Councilmember O'Neill, thank you all collectively and individually for your support over the years, it has been an honor and a pleasure working with you and the citizens of Pacifica, as well as the staff of Pacifica. We've accomplished quite a bit over the last five and a half years, and I am proud of every step that we've taken, you know, we've gone from a situation where our financial status was, it could have been better, let's just put it that way, to a point where I think we're well fortified to deal with whatever complications this COVID pandemic throws at the city, so I'm particularly happy about that. I wanted to also thank Kevin, and, I'm sorry, City Manager Woodhouse, and also City Attorney Kenyon for their support and tutelage over the years, and I'd also like to send a thank you out there to our former city manager, Lori Tenfo, who is the one responsible for bringing me here to Pacifica, so I'll always appreciate that. And I'd also, you know, send a special shout-out to the executive team here in Pacifica, I have never been part of a more family-oriented executive group, I will miss that, I will be trying to build that in Galt, and if it doesn't exist, it will exist soon after I get there, because that is the optimum environment for us to do the, do the work of the people here in Pacifica. I'd like to send a shout-out to Chris Porter and the team over at Recology of the Coast for their excellent work with me over the years, they've, they're, they're just incredible over there, and also, just again, just a big thank you to all of you, and it's been a great five and a half years, I will take Pacifica with me while I'm sweltering in the Sacramento Valley, I will have Pacifica in my heart, and, and taking solace in the fact that you all are still taking care of our people, okay? So y'all take care, and I appreciate all the, all the kind words, and I'm going to sign off now, so, because we've got some other business to deal with, thanks.
Thank you Lorenzo. City Manager Woodhouse, is that it?
That's it.
Sharp Park Specific Plan Meeting? Is that this Thursday, the Sharp Park Specific Plan Meeting?
Yes. And if Director Waremeister is on, perhaps she can give the details about that.
Yes, it is, this Thursday, it starts at 6:00 PM, and it'll be virtual via Zoom, and so we will, we have, I think, put out that information on some of the invites, and that'll also be available on our website for anybody who'd like to join.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll move on to our public hearing, which is, the request is for this continuance of item number 11, the move to continue the item to the regularly scheduled city council meeting on September 14th, 2020, do I have to have a motion for this?
Yes, there should be a motion and a vote on this item.
Okay.
Do we need public comment?
Yes, we do.
So the recommendation is for this item to be continued to regular meeting September 14th, it is for use permit 102-18 for the installation of New Verizon Wireless Communication Facility on Redwood Way, is there any public comment on this? Pulling up my participants here now. I see one hand raised. Last digits, 1541.
Madam Mayor, for the record, we should, you should also note that the public comment will only be about the issue of continuing the hearing, it will not be related to the substance or the merits of the hearing.
Okay, so, thank you, City Attorney, and with that, the hand has now been taken down, so it doesn't look like we have any public comment on this item, can I have a motion from council? Mike O'Neill?
Hi, I do want to let the public know that both the applicant and the, and the PLE agreed to this change, it wasn't initiated by the city, but I make a motion that we postpone the item until the regularly scheduled council meeting in September.
Second.
You have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Councilmember Vidalos?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And the motion to continue the public hearing on this item to the meeting on September 14th passes with a vote of five to zero.
Okay, thank you, we'll move on to items for consideration, where you are to...
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Five minutes?
Yes, absolutely, thanks for suggesting it, it is 8:40, let's be back at 8:46, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, I'm Ryan Marquez, your Associate Civil Engineer, Public Works Department. With me this evening, I have Paul Henderson, Project Manager with GHD, and Ben Gettleman, Vice President with Kerns &amp; West. We are here before you tonight to update you on the progress of the Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project. If that name doesn't sound familiar to you, well, that's because you've been paying attention. Staff and the project team felt the old name of Beach Boulevard Seawall Replacement Project was no longer fitting with the comprehensive scope of the project, and thus, the project was renamed to something we believe to be more fitting. On May 26th, I was before you to award the project for the planning and design. At that time, council communicated the importance of community engagement for this project. Staff communicated that we would return to council for an update once this project was underway. After this staff meeting, staff and the project team took a proactive approach to ensure our engagement effort would follow council's vision. We assessed and ultimately augmented the community engagement effort to include more upfront work. The augmentation is outlined in the staff report, and some of the items will be here discussed this evening. Next slide, please. The specific actions for the items tonight are twofold. First, staff is asking council to receive the presentation and provide feedback on what is outlined in both the presentation and in Attachment 1 entitled Engagement Activities and Objectives. Secondly, staff is asking, if council, or staff is asking council to consider appointing a two-councilmember ad hoc subcommittee to assist with specific tasks regarding the public engagement effort of this project. Next slide, please. With that, I'd like to hand it over to Paul Henderson from GHD to remind you of the project overview.
Thank you, Ryan, and thank you to the city for the opportunity to provide a brief overview of the project, progress of the project, and hopefully this provides some context for, before Ben gets into the detail of the community engagement strategy. In the slide, I'll just go through the three phases of the project, so Phase 1, which is the, all of the preliminary work that will feed into the other tasks, and I'll discuss Phase 1 a bit further in a second, Phase 2 will be the, the design and the permitting of the preferred alternatives, and then Phase 3 will be the construction of the preferred alternative. Right now, we're in the, just in the early stages of Phase 1, and I'll give you a quick overview of what makes up Phase 1, so we have the existing conditions review, and this is essentially to review the, the history of the seawall, the promenade area, and determine the current state of the infrastructure, so we're reviewing the history of failures, the overtopping, the promenade closures, and we'll perform a condition assessment of the existing structures just to estimate the remaining loss of the wall and the other structure. And we'll also be completing the site investigations for, for the future phases, like the geological borings and the surveys, and we'll be collecting information from the community also. And then, in the multi-hazard risk assessment, so this is looking at all of the hazards we need to consider in the design, so that we can protect the infrastructure from these hazards, and that such as the wave overtopping, flood risk, earthquake risk, risk to the utilities, the environmental conditions, and we'll also be looking at the economic impacts of the project. And we also have the alternatives analysis, and this is where we'll be comparing the potential seawall replacement options, and at this stage, we'll be formulating and comparing five, five different alternatives at this time. So all of the information gained in the existing condition review, the multi-hazard risk assessment, and the stakeholder engagement process will be used to, to score against various criteria to come up with a ranking of the five different alternatives, and then ultimately, we'll select a single preferred design alternative, and that will be fully designed and permitted in Phase 2, and then obviously constructed in Phase 3. If we could go to the next slide, please. So I just want to go through, quickly run through the project schedule and show you where we're at right now, so we're working through the stakeholder engagement and also the existing conditions review right now, and we'll be getting, we'll be commencing the multi-hazard risk assessment later this month, and then once we have all of the information needed, we'll be assessing all of the pros and cons and for the design alternatives, and coming up with the preferred alternative around March of next year, and then the plan is to jump straight into the detailed design and permitting and have construction-ready documents in late 2021, and then hoping to commence construction in early 2022, funding pending, obviously. So just to discuss, so the work that we've completed to date, so we've got the stakeholder engagement commenced, and Ben is going to talk to you more about the strategy soon, we've commenced the geotechnical site investigations, but, so taking borings along behind the seawall, taking core samples and things like that, we've completed some of the, the environmental site investigations, so the, we've had the biologists out there doing their review, and we've also had some of the ground survey and the aerial survey, so we've had the drone out there, and we've got a nice 3D model of the, the current condition, and some of the near-term upcoming milestones, so we're hoping to have the public meeting number one in mid-September, the first agency meeting with Coastal Commission in early September, completing the bath metrics survey, which is the survey of the ocean floor in fall, so that would give us the best conditions for the modeling of the wave run-up and, and the flood risk, and we will hope to complete the existing conditions report in early October, and the multi-hazard risk assessment in early November, and that's my project overview for now, and happy to say that we're on track, and I'll pass you over to Ben to discuss the community engagement strategy, thank you.
Thank you, Paul, good evening, council members, I'm Ben Gettleman from Kerns &amp; West, if I could ask, the next slide, please. So Kerns &amp; West is a member of the GHD team, we're the lead for stakeholder engagement for this project, and some folks on the city council and other attendees might be familiar with Kerns &amp; West, prior to this project, we worked on stakeholder engagement for the local coastal plan update in Pacifica, and prior to that, the regional coastal settlement management plan a couple of years before that, so we are certainly familiar with Pacifica, you know, the, the sort of different groups and, and just generally what's important in Pacifica as a community, so what we recently submitted to the city was a stakeholder engagement plan, a draft stakeholder engagement plan, which really is intended to serve as a roadmap for the stakeholder engagement process that's going to inform this project, and importantly, we really want to make sure we're aligning our engagement activities with the project tasks that Paul outlined, so we work really closely to make sure that, to the extent where we can get input, we're doing that at the right time, so it's informing decisions. So the, some of the high-level objectives in the plan and in our program generally for engagement, one is just to have a robust engagement effort, so we want to make sure we're certainly targeting folks in the West Shore Park neighborhood, and making sure we're building a broad understanding of the project, and also make sure people understand how they can participate, and we certainly understand, we're in a bit of a unique time here with engagement, but Kerns &amp; West certainly has some expertise with virtual engagement, and we're working with Ryan and his team to make sure we're getting some effective methods in place here to get information and input on this process. The second objective is, is, is to provide meaningful opportunities to make sure folks can participate in the... to make sure folks can participate in the, in the process of developing these alternatives, providing input, and gaining information when they're interested in getting it. And then, third, as I mentioned before, is making sure our engagement activities are aligned with the milestones, so the input can actually be incorporated into decisions that have to be made here. Next slide, please. So to inform our stakeholder engagement plan, Kearns &amp; West have conducted a round of interviews with a cross-section of stakeholders. This is recently, the last couple of weeks. And I'm just going to hear, share some, some high-level findings. I think, you know, what really stuck out for us is how important the promenade is to Pacifica, not only the residents and businesses, but also the visitors. It's really part of the identity of the town, and we know we have to get this right. Generally, we heard broad support for replacing the current infrastructure. We did note a couple, you know, some concerns around funding and how this big project's going to be paid for, who's going to pay for it, and the extent to which it could affect other projects that folks sees a priority to make sure those can get implemented as well. So that's a bit of concern there. In terms of what this project looked like, and what, you know, what people want to make sure is delivered on, you know, some of the key things we heard were certainly protecting private property, so that's homes, local businesses, protecting infrastructure, allowing for growth of the Shaw Park area and the town generally, making sure that recreational opportunities are maintained along the coastline, and also protecting the natural environment. So certainly, you know, a number of benefits to come out of this project is what I think folks are hoping for. We certainly did ask, next slide, please. We, we also asked, you know, how do stakeholders want to be engaged in this process? What's going to work? And we also did draw on our experience, Kearns &amp; West's experience as well. We recognize this is a, a project that's very important to West Shaw Park, but we also heard that this is a decision for everyone in Pacifica, and we need to engage all the residents of Pacifica. Certainly, certainly people are looking for transparency here in terms of how decisions are being made, making sure they're receiving messages that are clear, they can understand what's going on, and they're getting the materials in a timely way. I think what, what the hope is here is that we're driving towards a, a shared vision for the Beach Boulevard Promenade, sort of combining the different interests and hopefully coming up with something that, that everyone will be really proud of. A couple of things about engagement. I think there's a real interest in understanding the trade-offs between the alternatives of, you know, costs, potentially impacts. What are the other factors that people need to be considering here as they look across these alternatives? And then finally, just making sure that, that people get advance notice for any public meetings, any other opportunities to, to engage, that folks are getting that notice and they can kind of adjust their schedules accordingly. Next slide, please. So this is a, sort of a high-level view of our engagement schedule here, and I'm just going to go top to down to, to make it simple. On the top, you, you see the different components of Phase 1 here that Paul already walked us through. Today, we are giving an update to city council, and this is certainly something we want to do as much as it's requested to make sure that you all have a good understanding of how the community is being engaged here. And I know Ryan has talked about the ad hoc committee, and I think he'll follow up on that, too. The targeted conversations, we want to have an ongoing dialogue with different stakeholders in Pacifica here. It started with the interviews. It's likely going to continue throughout the, the process here. We want to make sure, you know, if people want to have conversations or understand information a little better, that we're making ourselves available for that. The next row is the regulatory agency meeting. So this is the Coastal Commission, Army Corps, State Lands, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board mainly. But essentially, they're meet, we're meeting with them to make sure we're bringing them along as we go through the different milestones of the project here. And then, in terms of engaging the broader community, we are going to be issuing an online survey within a couple of weeks that really tries to get information from as many people as we can that's going to inform the existing conditions report. And then, as we kind of go further in time, a series of community workshops, again, that align with the different milestones of the project. So the first one, as Paul mentioned, is sometime in mid-September. We haven't confirmed a date yet, but, you know, we want to get out as, as much advance notice as possible as we can for that. And then, finally, in terms of project information, the fact sheet's going to be out pretty soon. And then, we're going to make sure that we're keeping the website as updated as we can so folks can access information when it's most convenient for them. So the idea here, you know, to Ryan's point earlier, was really to have a robust engagement program, and I, and we want to just bring this to the council and see if you all are supportive of it. But we do want to make sure we're being responsive to what we're hearing, that folks really do want to engage and be able to follow the process and provide input as, as we go along here. Next slide, please. And then finally, I just want to just quickly touch on the exchange of information, just recognizing that as we go through the different components of Phase 1, it's going to be back and forth, both in terms of the city and the technical consultants sharing information around existing conditions, for example, and why do we study that, and what's the approach, but also collecting input on certain things that's going to inform that. So, for example, the online survey, we're not, really want to know how folks interact with the area, what they really value about it, and those are important considerations for existing conditions, for example. As we move to multi-hazard risk assessment, again, we want to read very clear about what is the approach here? Why do you do this? And then, and then again, collect input that's going to inform that. So really understanding what are the priorities and what is at risk? And then, that'll help address, that'll help identify ways to address those things that are at risk. And then finally, next slide, please. The alternative design development analysis, this is sort of the, as we move towards the end of this Phase 1, we do want to get, again, we want to continue the conversation of getting feedback. There's going to be a features and amenity toolbox, and that's really going to be the focus, one of the focus areas of this, this part of the work. And ultimately, it makes sure, again, folks understand what are the criteria for identifying the alternatives and the preferred alternative, and where can they weigh in. So I think those are my slides. I'm going to hand it back to you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ben. Next slide, please. So an option that was discussed last time we met is for council to get more involved with the public engagement effort of this project through the formation of a two-councilmember ad hoc subcommittee. The committee could provide the project team with specific support on the four following tasks. Number one, identifying a broad range of project stakeholders. Number two, providing suggestions on the best methods to reach these stakeholders and encourage their participation. Three, amplifying the project's community involvement opportunities during their own work in the community. Four, provide overall input and feedback on engagement strategy plan document. Staff believes an ad hoc subcommittee could provide valuable feedback and insights that could ultimately benefit the public engagement effort of this project. Next slide, please. With that, I'd like to open up to questions, comments, and feedback.
Hi.
What do you see the benefit of the ad hoc committee is for this entire project?
Thanks for the question. So some of the benefits that, that I see from my point of view is that it provides, council provides very keen insight into the local community, and they can provide those insights and feedback to the project's proposed engagement efforts. And we feel as though those could be beneficial to ensuring that all stakeholders are heard during this phase of the project. And Ben, if you have anything else to add, I'll pass it over to you, too.
No, I don't think so. I mean, the only thing I'd add is similar to what Ryan said, is I think that you and I all know best about how to get out to your constituents, and so we want to make sure that the feedback loop is solid here and that we're getting to people. And I think the extent that you're hearing things from your constituents, it just allows us to stay up to speed in terms of making sure any concerns or requests for information or confusion, we can, we can really address that as quickly as possible. So that would be the idea. And then, and then I would say, just to start, to make sure that generally, there's support for the, the strategy we have here, that we're going about this the right way from your perspective, and we're making tweaks if we need to before we really launch into it.
Thank you.
Sue Beckmeyer?
I have a question primarily for Ben, I think. In terms of community outreach that you've done with other projects, I know you mentioned the ones you've done in Pacifica. Can you describe for a project such as this, what kind of interactivity there would be with the community? I mean, I realize we're in COVID times, so it's a little bit different than your pro forma, but how, knowing Pacifica as you do, how can you imagine ways for the community to interact?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. I mean, my, my experience on the local coastal plan is that what, I think what folks really value is the opportunity to hear all the voices in the room, and it's often a big room. So, you know, we did a lot of meetings in the community center and a lot of comment. And I, and I think that, you know, that will not be possible right in the near future in person. But I do think that with the technology that's available now, there are certainly ways of, of getting as close as we can. I think in terms of workshops, having breakout groups, those sorts of things, to make it so people actually have the opportunity to talk. It's just really hard with, you know, this many people online, and we have to make it a little bit more personal. So we have the platforms to allow you to do that. I also think, we're also trying to find different ways of engaging folk because that doesn't work for everyone. So that's why we have, we're going to have an online survey. It's going to be really easy to use. It's going to be map-based and visual, so we can really get as much input as we, as we can on that. And then, I think as we kind of move on in time, I think there will be opportunities to, again, maybe not get a lot of people in the room together, but certainly get people to be out in the space and sort of look, you know, thinking about it and sharing information with us. So again, it's going to take some creativity, but I think we, we, we are familiar with the community. And again, I think this is another, you know, another value of working with some council members because we're going to try a bunch of things, and some things are really going to work, and we're going to have to see how other things work. So I think my, my main thing would say it's a combination of things because we're, we're trying to get as many people in Pacifica as we can so they can participate.
In terms of modeling the alternatives, will it be 2D? Or is there any sort of a 3D aspect in a project with this type of scope?
So I would have to double-check the scope, but I believe that we do have some sort of 3D rendering towards the end. I don't think it's for the five alternatives, but it may be for the three or the, the last one, yes.
Yeah, okay. That's what I was remembering, too. I was, didn't look that other packet up, so I wasn't sure. Thank you. That's all for now. Thanks.
Beckmeyer got a question?
Yeah, this is kind of a little bit off-topic, but as you can see, one of the concerns was preserving the recreational activities along the, along the esplanade there. And, and I'm not an engineer, but is there anything you can design that maybe could help or be a part of this that would help preserve the pier? You know, because that's, you know, maybe if part of the, that, if it's easier to repair the pier because of what you do now, that would be something that, you know, I realize you're not going to fix the pier, but at least the base or footing, is there, do you, I'm just kind of mentioning if that could be a part of your scope. I know you, you can't really design it on the cuff or whatever.
Yeah, so we do have, the project will be looking at the actual protective structure at the, kind of the eastward side of the pier, so kind of near Chit Chat. The actual wall structure is going to be assessed as part of this project. However, the project's not scoped to look at the actual pier structure going out into the water.
Oh, no, I realized that, but I was hoping that whatever's designed would be conducive to help fix the pier whenever funding might be available for that. You know, so you don't have to tear out part of the seawall in order to fix the pier. This is basically what I'm talking about.
Understood. I, I'm not really sure on how to answer that question. Paul, maybe you can chime in, or if someone else?
It's just a statement I kind of wanted to get in the record because one of the, you saw one of the top five things was preserve the recreational opportunities. And I think the pier is, you know, sometimes just the, you know, people think of Pacifica as the pier.
Understood.
Yeah, sorry. We would certainly take that into consideration during the, during the design and the alternatives. That's not something that I had thought of, so thank you for that.
And, and this is Lisa Peterson, Public Works Director, and it is typical when you are designing a project that you take into account the other projects that will happen in the future. I mean, absolutely, the goal is not to build something and then rip it out at a later date. So that would certainly be something we would be looking at when the final design was moving forward. And thank you for that question. It was a great one. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and go. So I don't have any questions because they were already addressed by Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer's question, so thank you for that. But I do have some comments. I'm just really happy to see that you're going to be concentrating on the entire community because I know there's a lot of people outside of West Shaw Park that are going to want to comment on this and have some, very much for that. I know that everybody's having to think outside the box right now. You know, we're all doing outreach, like in my work, we're doing outreach differently than we've ever done it before. And so I appreciate that that's going to be challenging, and I look forward to see what can come out of it. So thank you so much for your presentations. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the pretty detailed presentation. Was the, the second part of this, consider appointing to council member, we already talked about that, Ryan, that's considered, talked about, is that right?
Yeah, the discussion in the staff presentation was at the end.
Okay, and my question in that regard is, was this, I don't know if you know the answer to this, was a two-member council with a limited term ad hoc subcommittee recommended by a current council member? I don't know, city manager?
Yeah, Mayor Martin, I can, I can take that. I know during the, the contract approval, the concept of potentially having a two-member ad hoc committee was, was raised, and, and we've done that similar structure for the Shaw Park specific plan. We did it for the local coastal plan update. And so we wanted to return with that option and have evaluated that. And, you know, that's, that's why it's on the list.
Okay, and the reason I ask is because I was curious if there was any interest, sort of initially, is there anybody that's, you know, gagging to get on the subcommittee? And if, if they are, then maybe raise your hand.
I am. I'll raise my hand. And I also have a question in regards specifically to the ad hoc subcommittee, the four points that are listed on packet page 212. So I was going to propose something, actually, I know it's very specific and it states that, very specific tasks, but in an earlier paragraph, there's discussion about broader outreach within San Mateo County. And I would propose that we add a fifth item to that regarding broad outreach to key stakeholders outside of Pacifica. I think that's a role for council members and an important one in light of, you know, partnerships that we have and hope to strengthen. And, you know, the whole issue I mentioned before about people forget about us out here on the coast sometimes. So yes, I'm interested.
I'd have no problem adding that. I think it's an important piece. Discussion about that.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Just because the item one is, is identifying a broad range of project stakeholders. So I would just suggest that includes within Pacifica and those stakeholders that are even outside of Pacifica. Is that, is that aligned with what you were suggesting, Councilmember Beckmeyer?
Yeah, that, it could be within the scope. It just felt like everything I was hearing was really focused and appropriately within Pacifica. But, you know, it didn't seem like it's for that one item that touched on the, the flood and sea level rise resiliency district as one example. But there are other related outside of Pacifica things to consider, such as the golf course, such as, you know, work, work with perhaps even our part, our, our neighbors close by so they're aware of what we're doing in Half Country Bay, City, and that kind of thing. And I just didn't want that to get lost. And I agree, it could be part of item one.
And I think that's why it's so important to have an ad hoc committee because ideas like that come up. So I'm interested, too. I know Mike is, too, though.
Yeah, if you want, we can flip a coin, Mary.
That one?
I don't know how you do it virtually. Is there an app for it? I don't know how you do it virtually. Is there an app for it?
There's a spinning wheel, I think.
Yeah. So I'm willing to do it also. I mean, and I was on the committee with Sue Beckmeyer for the Sharp Park specific plan. So, but if Mary wants to get her feet wet, I'm okay with that also, whatever works for the, to get to the goal and the cause. Or, you know what, Mary, you and I could do it and just let Sue out.
I think Sue really had her, I felt like Sue really had-
I was kidding, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I know, because she had mentioned it a while ago and has, and then I feel comfortable with having Mary also. I feel like that,
Okay.
from my opinion feels like a pretty even-keeled representation of the city.
Sure, I'm okay with that. No problem.
And Sue Vodarlos, are you comfortable with that as well?
I'm fine with that, too. I was on one ad hoc committee for the the LCP, so.
All right, great. So do we have, Ryan and City Manager, do you have what you need for us to call this complete?
Yeah, so what I'm, the direction I'm hearing is that Mayor Protam Beckmeyer and Councilmember Beer will form a two-member ad hoc subcommittee. And the project team will coordinate with them for the meetings related to that. And unless there's any other input about the engagement plan, we're, we're off and running on this exciting project.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Before there's any decision or direction, we need to have public comments.
Thank you for reminding me. Let's see. Let me pull up my attendee list, and we will have a party. Okay, attendees, I do have one public comment here. So, thank you for the reminder.
I'll now open public comment to Kimberly Williams. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. I want to thank Councilmember Beckmeyer for recognizing that other stakeholders need to be included. There are a couple of things that I would just like to bring to your attention, and that is that to recognize that this project will impact all of Pacifica's beaches in terms of erosion and beach loss over the course of time, not just, you know, the Sharp Park use of the area. And that any alternative considered should be considered in how it limits the impact to beach loss all the beaches in Pacifica and up and down the coast adjacent. And then the last thing in regard to stakeholders is that I attend these meetings on behalf of our local surf rider chapter, San Mateo County. And I would like you to consider Surf Rider as a stakeholder, and also local surfers, local, local surf shops, and local surf schools and camps, because this directly impacts their livelihood, their recreation. It's not just the Sharp Park neighborhood. I appreciate you listening to my comments, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kimberly. I don't see any other hands raised. So I will close public comments, and I will just add that I agree that Surf Rider should be a stakeholder that is consulted. They attended all of our LCP meetings, and as a surfer myself, that is an important aspect of, of any plan along our coast, so. All right, do we have what we need to move on to item number 13?
Do we need a vote?
No, it's just, receive the presentation and appoint the council member. So is that considered appointed, or do we need a vote to appoint?
I think I have sufficient direction, but if Attorney Kenyon-
No, as long, as long as you feel that you have enough staff direction.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. So we will move on to item number 13. Receiver report provide direction regarding temporary closure of beaches and beach parking facilities during coronavirus local emergency.
Thank you, Mayor Martin, Mayor Protam Beckmeyer, and Councilmember Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. As the council is very much aware, during our coronavirus response, what's going on six months now, some of the tougher emergency decisions that, that I, as, as the Director of Emergency Services during this local emergency have made have related to various types of closures related to our beaches. At first, it was trying to reduce the, the number of visitors coming and creating difficult spreading of COVID-19 situations by closing parking, and then expanding that to closing parking adjacent to beach parking, such as on streets. And what we saw during that process was visitors still coming to the beaches and really reaching deeper into the neighborhoods and creating crowds and traffic and health impacts in the neighborhoods. So it was a difficult situation. And then, leading up to the holiday weekend of July 4th, when the governor announced the closure of state beach parking lots on the San Mateo Coast, and Half Moon Bay was considering closing their beach parking as well as their beaches. I worked very closely with the other neighboring jurisdictions, Half Moon Bay, the county, state parks, in a unified approach to closure. And at that point, we decided that the best thing to do would be to have a hard closure of the beaches. No one allowed on the beaches for 4th of July weekend. That's a difficult decision. It's an economic impact to the city, but of great concern in Pacifica is also our health concerns related to large crowds at beaches. So in this whole pandemic response, we've been balancing various values. Subsequent to the 4th of July, as we entered into further into the summer, the mayor and I were talking about, I think it was a few weeks ago, the possibility that the governor might again order state beach parking closures. And that would in turn bring crowds to Pacifica if we didn't do a similar closure. The governor's action didn't occur at that time, but what the mayor and I talked about, and the mayor requested, was that this item be listed to just publicly talk about the different conditions that exist that would drive me as the emergency director to do a hard closure of beaches, and to receive council member input on those conditions, so that as we move throughout the summer and lead up to perhaps a Labor Day weekend, and with the chance that the governor or Half Moon Bay may make similar closure decisions, what kind of a decision are we left to make? And so what I've outlined in the report are a series of conditions that I would run through in, in considering closure, and that is, what are the relevant county and state health orders applicable to the situation at the time? So we always have to make these decisions in context of what's happening with the coronavirus, what are the risks? What's the state of the county and state health orders? And then, has the governor of California ordered the closure of state beaches and or parking along the San Mateo County coast such that that would drive crowds to Pacifica, should the Pacifica beaches remain open? Similarly, has the city of Half Moon Bay made that kind of decision as well? And would closure of beach parking facilities, but not the beaches, result in major impacts to neighborhoods adjacent to beaches? And because those outside of Pacifica would still come trying to go to the beach, and they would create that impact. We know that to be generally the case. Also important is, will there be a coordinated effort in public outreach if such closure decisions were made, so that those outside of Pacifica know not to even come over to the coast for a holiday weekend or a warm weather weekend, if the beach is gonna be closed? So in other words, we need to all work together with Caltrans to get the message out broadly in the Bay Area. I mean, we have people that come to Pacifica beaches, you know, as far as the Central Valley, from Tracy or wherever, they drive a long way and come to Pacifica's beaches. And what is the duration of the temporary closure and its impact on city expenditures and economic impacts in the community, relative and balanced with the mitigation of health risk? In terms of fiscal impact, closure of a city beach, of city beaches is not a simple thing. It requires a lot of staffing and time and enforcement time from public works through our crews that lay out the barricades to the rangers that do enforcement, as well as all of the overtime for the police department or the enforcement. And it would be estimated that a three-day closure of beaches directly costs the city $12,000 to do that. And we would be pursuing federal or state reinvert coronavirus kind of CARES Act reimbursement for that, but, you know, the financial impact is not de minimis in such a closure. So I'll stop there. Just wanted to lay out the conditions, so to be very transparent about the decision-making process we go through. Receive any council comments or input on that. I should note that we don't have an indication at this point that the governor or Half Moon Bay is going to, or planning to close beaches for Labor Day weekend. And so again, one of the main drivers is that if the governor, or if another city like Half Moon Bay makes the decision to close beaches or parking, that would unduly impact Pacifica. And, and as happened 4th of July, I would be led towards making the decision to close Pacifica's beaches as well. I'll stop there, and yeah, questions?
And just for everyone's information, I asked City Manager to agenda this because around, you know, when this whole thing happened, of course, everybody wanted the beaches closed, because when the governor closed the state lots, we got, all got calls from the neighborhoods, right? So the 4th of July holiday came up and that we, I, I had talked to the Lieutenant Governor, I talked to Senator Feinstein's office, and they were all basically saying, we have to close our beaches. If they're gonna close the lots, again, because at this point, they had already been open, then it makes sense to close our beaches. I've also, at that time, was in very close contact with the mayor of Half Moon Bay, and we've subsequently been in contact all the time about what's going on on each of our beaches. So a couple, and we're all getting calls. It's not the Pacificans that were, that, that are having sort of issues with overcrowding. It's the folks who don't know about it. So from, from my perspective, this agenda item basically is sort of a nod to the city manager to say, if these conditions exist, we give you the permission to be able to make that decision and/or start coordinating those decisions, because Half Moon Bay sometimes looks to us and says, well, if you close your beach, then we've gotta close ours. One can't be closed without the other, or else the other will be inundated. So there's all these certain conditions that may be created. And, and, and from, you know, I get calls all the time. For those of you who have been mayor, or will be mayor, you'll know that people think that you can just close down the beaches with one single phone call, and that it doesn't, you know, affect anyone else. What, what you want is the signs over the hill to have Pacifica beaches closed. You want enough information ahead of time, so you can take every single interview with every single news station, so it gets out over the hill and out to Tracy and out to Sacramento. So I appreciate, Kevin, that you put together this very comprehensive list of conditions that would have to exist. And I would say that, that it would, it would help if we gave kind of Kevin that, that, that permission to make those decisions if needed. So I'll step back.
And if I could just clarify, thank, thank you for that. And you raised a really excellent point, Mayor Martin, about in the coordinated outreach, the, the efforts with all of the interviews, radio and TV that you did for 4th of July weekend, that all helped a great deal. A couple nuances I want to clarify related to this list. It's not sort of a a defined checklist that those conditions have to exist. There may be other circumstances that also need to be factored in at that time. And, and I just want to be clear that in, in that case, the way the emergency directive process works is that, that under city municipal code and state law, I have the authority to make those decisions, and then the, the emergency order then goes to the council for ratification at a, at a later date. But there could be last-minute decisions that need to be made that, you know, can't be agendized by the council. So again, this is sort of a proactive way of, of talking about the evaluation process.
Yeah, that makes sense. So in other words, we know that you're being thorough in, in your decision-making process. Right? I got it. You have any questions?
It's not so much a question as a comment, common observation on item four. I think we know the answer to that and have experienced the issue of would closure of beach parking facilities, but not the beaches result in major impacts to neighborhoods adjacent to beaches? Because visitors would still come to access the beach. And we, as, as Mayor Martin just mentioned, we definitely got a ton of calls on that at the time that it occurred. And so I guess I'm, my statement is, I think they do best in lockstep with each other. And I realize that you don't personally have the power, probably, to just decide to close Pacifica's beaches, but I'm really, it's, I'm glad to hear that the effort is a strong one with Half Moon Bay, and I'm assuming with the county. In light of the masking order and discussion about large gatherings and being, you know, too many people from not the same household or not the social 12-person bubble and all that, I'm a little, gotta be honest, I'm looking ahead to Labor Day. I'm a little concerned about what we're gonna see. And, and I don't know that it's appropriate to proactively decide we're gonna close it, but it's not unreasonable to anticipate that we, we see what we've been seeing for the last week at the beach. It's not even Labor Day. So, and, and the other comment is sort of not somewhat related. You know, when we read Dr. Morrow's August 6th statement, we, you know, his statement in summary is, I don't think the things that we recently had to shut down in San Mateo County are the problem. And we've heard on tonight's meeting from multiple Pacifica business owners and residents in both, residents who are business owners, that their personal care businesses have to be closed. And yet, the beach can be open with multiple crowds, you know, which we can't control. That's the thing, you know? You roll the dice in a way, you sort of hope, and I mean, honestly, you kind of go, well, maybe it'll be bad weather and people won't come. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, I support all efforts to protect our community and all of the folks who would want to use our beaches during this time, when we are still seeing infection spreading in the community and a spike in that, I think, except for the data, and that's another whole topic. So that's all I'm gonna say for now.
Mike?
Apologize, my internet keeps coming up, it's unstable, so I don't know if somebody already said this or not. But I do feel, if you close the parking lots, you close the beach, okay? Because I don't think it's fair, the impact on Pedro Point Shopping Center especially, at Lindemar, Park and Ride, you know, and the neighbors all the way up to De Solo, and Robert, up on Roberts Road, have all the people, if the beach is still open, the parking lots closed, they are all impacted. So I would really support that you be able to close the beach and the parking lots if you, you know, move forward with this. And I support it. I have no problem with it, so.
I agree. Sue Vodarlos? Sue Vailas, you have anything or Mary?
Um, yeah, I, I agree too. I mean, I, I know that people told me all about the beach this weekend. So when there's a holiday, if the, like Sue says, you know, we kind of go, gee, I hope the, I hope the fog's in because not so many people will be at the beach. So Kevin, yes, you can go ahead if all items are met and thank you. I'm, I'm good.
Mike?
Okay, Kevin, do you know if we could get any sort of funding in regard from COVID? To get one of those signs, you know, that's on a cart that, so that you can put it like at 280 and one that says Pacifica Beaches closed. Beaches and parking lots closed. So that you don't have people driving all the way down Highway one and at Sharp Park Road. They see the beaches closed or even worse when they see the fastler. Is there any way that we could get a second, another cart to, you know, put that up?
Yeah, the, the portable signs during the 4th of July closure, we worked with Caltrans to, because they, they have more of those signs. We have one, I believe, and, and we have deployed that. But Caltrans has more. I, I don't recall whether they were able to deploy those 4th of July, but that, the coordinated public outreach effort is, is intended to, to get that as many of those signs up as well as the permanent highway signs on 280 and such, and you know, as you're approaching this area, this region. We don't, I don't think you're asking this, but I, I, we don't have the resources to purchase a new sign. I mean, we can certainly look into that. We might be, maybe there's grant funding for that, that maybe we can get reimbursed for through, through a future local government assistance like the Heroes Act and such. I, I think that's a great idea. It would be nice to have a second sign to be able to do that. But we will work intensively to, to get as many of those signs and get the word out as much as possible through the county, Caltrans, et cetera.
Thank you.
I also completely agree with all of this. And even, even like the fiscal impacts, we're talking about people's lives here. And the only way that we're going to be able to reopen our communities, our businesses, our schools is if we do something to, to reduce the, the amount of spread. So I'm, I'm all for it. So thank you for bringing it up on, on the agenda, Mayor Martin. I think it's important to have the public discussion about it so people understand. Thank you for that.
You're on mute, Mayor Martin.
I do have one public comment. Thank you.
We'll hear now from Tiger Jazz Big Stick.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. I'm Tiger Jazz Twirl's Big Stick of Pacifica. So a, as you all know, I am a central worker who works at a major retailer directly on the beach for all intents and purposes. And I'll tell you, even on foggy days on the weekend, you're still getting folks from the Central Valley trying to escape the heat. From my perspective, as soon as the floodgates were opened for the Memorial Day holiday to allow everybody to again, start co-mingling socially, it seemed that was about the, where the spike originated from as near as I can tell. And those floodgates have been open for quite a while. So I'm, I'm grateful that the governor is now starting to dial it back again, turn down the dimmer switch. And as we start recuperating, first of all, thank you to Councilwoman Beck Meyer because you kind of said a lot of what I would want to say, especially when the beauty industry was referencing the beaches being the source. Because I, I'm there working every weekend, seeing all the folks who are there on the beach. And again, in, in my business, we don't have the availability to move around a whole lot. So a lot of times we're just kind of trapped there in our little cell while people from outside our community, you know, usually they don't make it into the store without a mask. We're pretty good at catching them before they get in, but sometimes they do. I had a charming individual this weekend who had a mesh mask thereby complimenting things. Certainly not a community member of ours. And you know, as our community becomes acclimatized toward, you know, working as a community, every weekend, weekend after weekend, we get to enjoy visitors who come and not all of them, to put it bluntly, care about our community. I would put it even more bluntly if not for a genteel company currently. So we all get to feel at risk every weekend. And the point is well taken that, you know, an indefinite closure probably isn't feasible. But the easier you make it for yourselves to be able to close things down whenever you'd like, the better off that's going to be because I get to work and for all intents and purposes, live in an environment with, you know, about a hundred other people, all of whom have families, who are perpetually worried that one of these folks from, at the least outside of our community, are coming to our beach to enjoy it. And, you know, as well, under normal circumstances, they would have the blessing of everyone here. But under these circumstances, we are perpetually in fear of our lives. And the, the easier it is made for you to be able to close down that beach and the more you want to do it, all of us are in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiger. Any other hands raised? I'll close public comments. I think you have, uh, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of make a comment, historical perspective maybe, is that this isn't just for COVID too. I'm hoping when several years ago, we had a tsunami scare because of an earthquake over in Japan, I think it was. And everybody went to the beach to watch the tsunami. Well, that's a time when the city managers should maybe close the beach and the parking lots. You know what I mean? So this isn't just for COVID. This is also for other potential disasters that might happen. So just kind of that reference too. So do we need a vote or?
No, we don't need a vote. I think city manager has enough information. So we will go ahead and move on to item number 14. Consider adoption of, oh, this has to be by a four fist vote. So it's a consideration of adoption of an urgency ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on commercial tenant evictions for non-payment of rents for tenant impacted by COVID-19 pandemic in the city of Pacifica.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I will be giving a short staff report on this. So you will recall that on June 10th, the council did adopt an urgency ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on tenant evictions on the basis of non-payment of rent for commercial establishments. The sunset date in that ordinance was July 28th, which was determined to coincide with the governor's suspension of preemption statutes that prohibited cities from establishing such moratoriums. That executive order was extended until August 30th. And so staff has prepared the, an attached urgency ordinance relating on moratorium on commercial evictions that essentially mirrors what the prior ordinance provided. This deadline in this ordinance, however, is set to expire along with any further extensions of the governor's order or within 180 days, whichever occurs first. The provisions that are essentially the same that are of import to the council, I think, deal with the, it does prohibit property owners from recovering possession of commercial real estate property from a commercial tenant for failure to pay rent, provided that the tenant can demonstrate that the failure to pay rent is directly related to a decrease in business income that results from COVID-19. The property owners must also provide tenants with notice of this ordinance. And it does protect businesses only with gross receipts of 2.5 million or less. It does authorize tenants to use the urgency ordinance as affirmative defense in any unlawful detainer action. And it provides the tenants with the ability to pay back any rent up to 90 days after the expiration or termination of the urgency ordinance. It, but it's also important to note that it does not relieve the tenant from ultimate liability for back rent that is not paid. That is something that they will have to pay either within 90 days of the termination of the ordinance or any other extensions that the council may, may determine are appropriate. So with that, I will answer any questions and be able to, to provide you any other assistance that you need. As, and as the mayor described, we do need a four fist vote in order to pass this ordinance.
Yep. Any questions?
No question.
Mayor Pretend Beckmeyer?
I have a question about the deadline. As I'm looking at packet H221, referencing an extended, the extended, the July 20th deadline, July 20th, 2020 deadline to September 30th. Thereby advising local governments to continue regulating evictions through September 30th.
You're correct. It's September 30th, not August.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question is our ordinance, and I apologize for not taking the time to look this up myself. The ordinance that we passed on June 10th is referenced as ordinance number 857. In the discussion in the paragraph, it also references ordinance number 856. And I think they're the same thing.
Yes, it's eight, it's eight, it should be 857.
Seven, okay. Thank you. Because I was like, wait, is there another one I'm supposed to?
No, there isn't. My apologies.
No, no, it's fine. I just thought, uh, because I have to say, when reading these kinds of things, it's because there's so much reiteration of, you know, going back to in March, the governor said this, and then this happened, and then this happened. It gets, it gets very confusing. And I want to be really, really clear on what we're discussing and, and what the import of it is because it directly affects our small business owners, many of whom we heard from tonight and during public comment. I heard during public comment that the way it sounds to me like is the landlords aren't aware of this. And so when you talk about a business that's closed and they're struggling to pay their rent, struggling to meet the requirements of their landlords, I believe is how she put it. It's not like they're coming together to work it out. And so I don't know what to do about that other than making sure, you know, the minimum is, we put something in place. I know we've put out and we've discussed this at the Economic Development Committee, you know, information to commercial businesses or all of that. But I just want to be really, really clear that I understand what we're deciding and the deadlines and how that all fits together. So it sounds like potentially we're deciding to extend this to September 30th.
Well, we're not, it's not September 30th. It is either the, when the governor, if, if the governor does not extend the September 30th date, then it would be September 30th. Or it would be whenever that extension is up. Or within 180 days of this adoption date, whichever is earlier. And the reason for that is because there is some concern that we cannot have a temporary moratorium go on indefinitely. So we need an end date to it.
Okay.
And to your point about tenants currently feeling that landlords do not, are not aware of this or are not discussing with them, the ordinance does require that the landlords provide the tenants with notice of this ordinance. So, you know, that should prompt some discussion.
If both parties know about it, right? So let's say landlord, just hypothetically, landlord doesn't know about it. You know, maybe forgave March because it was like, oh my God, everything got closed down, but started demanding, expecting, requiring rent payments for April, May, June. At which, you know, at whatever point the, the property owner would decide to exercise the rights they have under the lease in non-COVID times, conceivably, non-payment of rent is a condition of breaking the lease, right? So in this hypothetical situation, if this landlord goes to this tenant and says, or you gotta go, then the tenant can say, oh, but don't you know, Pacifica has this ordinance? If they know about it. If they don't know about it, they could say, oh my gosh, you know, and mortgage the house or whatever to try to meet that. And so I guess what I'm trying to, with a lot of words here, look for is the extent of the flexibility that we have as well as the impact, foreseeable impact of the decision we're going to make tonight. That's really it. And I'll stop talking now.
I, I would say a couple of things to that. I would say number one, that any eviction process would not be effective if the landlord, landlord did not provide this notice to the tenant of the provisions in the ordinance. Number two, it is still true that the courts are not processing any unlawful detainer actions. So practically, although, you know, I'm sure that it is going to be of concern and upset to commercial tenants who receive a notice to quit from landlords. But the reality is those summons and those unlawful detainer actions will not be processed through the courts. So an actual eviction will not occur during this COVID pandemic. Unless the courts decide through some future executive judicial order that they do want to start processing unlawful detainer actions. But I've received no indication that they have any intent to do that.
Mary, do you have something? You're on mute. No, okay. Mike?
Sue and I were discussing this because there's a specific tenant that's kind of just being harassed by everybody's favorite landlord of a large shopping center here. And is it part, and we at one point sent a letter directly to that landlord. Is it possible for us to send a, a letter to that same landlord if this passes tonight?
I, there, if, we certainly could direct somebody on staff to send a letter to the landlord, any landlord, to inform them of the city's adoption of the urgency ordinance.
Because I know that business that Sue's familiar with, and I know of another business in town that because of the rent, they are planning on closing in October because the landlord's not giving them any break. So it would be possible, I don't know if we can do that publicly or if we need to do it offline, to direct staff to send letters specifically to those two landlords?
I think you can, yes, we, you can give direction to us on, on what you would like us to do. In the event.
Yeah, offline would be fine. Let us know. And, and any, any landlord database we have through economic development, we can also broadly broadcast the ordinance adoption.
Okay. Thank you.
While we're talking about that, it might be a good idea to engage the chamber also to send the information out.
Yeah.
We're going to have some hearty discussions later on in the year. But for now, let's see, are there any public comments? I don't see any hands raised. I will entertain a motion. I don't see any hands raised. I will entertain a motion. I'll close public comments.
I move that we adopt. Oh, wait. I need to find the spot.
Number 14.
The urgency ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on commercial rent evictions from non-payment of rent for tenants impacted by COVID-19 pandemic in the City of Pacifica.
I can't.
We'll call votes, please.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Councilmember Vatalos?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And item number 14 passes with a vote of five in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember O'Neil suggested, I think city staff just took a note that there's at least two, two landlords that maybe need to receive notice of that. So Mike, you'll get with city staff? Frozen, but I'll assume that Beck, Sue Beckmeyer will inform them of that. Okay, um, moving on to item number 15, designation of voting delegate for League of California Cities Annual Conference. Kirk Coffee?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and present the brief staff report on this one. Mayor and council members, as you know, Pacifica is a member of the League of California Cities, which is an association based in Sacramento that represents the interests of California cities to the state legislature and provides cities with information on federal and state legislative and administrative affairs. The, the league holds an annual conference in October each year, and typically that annual conference is held in Long Beach, California. However, this year, because of the COVID-19 situation, the, the league's annual conference will be held in a virtual setting from October 7th through 9th, 2020. And the annual business meeting portion of that meeting will be held on Friday, October 9th. As far as the, the latest tentatively scheduled, uh, schedule is to hold the business meeting on Friday, October 9th at 11:00 a.m. And the league is looking for the city to designate a voting delegate for that meeting, which they will consider resolutions at the league level. So this item is for the council's deliberation regarding selecting a voting delegate for that meeting and an alternate council member that may make a motion to, to act on the resolution package that is before the League of California Cities Annual Conference at that meeting.
Okay. Anybody have any grand wishes that we may grant you this evening? I know, I think it was Sue Vaterlos who was our voting delegate last year or this, was it you, Sue?
Yeah, I did it last time.
I was gonna say Sue Vaterlos.
I did it before.
You proposed to Vaterlos?
No. No, no. I actually cannot attend the league because I have multiple other meetings that day on, on that same day.
Okay, so Sue Vaterlos is out. Sue Beckmeyer, are you, is that, is that a look of interest?
I'd be willing to do it. I'm gonna attend the league meeting on that day.
We've lost Mike.
Just so everyone knows.
You what, Sue?
I don't want to take all these voting opportunities, you know, I, I welcome fellow council members who want to do it. Jump, jump right up.
Well, you're representing us. So Mary, do you have any input there?
No, I, I would love it if Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer would do that.
Me too.
Member O'Neil? He's not there.
I think he's on his way back in.
Okay.
Mayor Martin, if I, if I may, just as a reminder, also in early, or sometime in September, we usually bring forth the resolutions and the issues for council to take a position on. And that sort of provides the direction to the voting delegate of, of how to vote.
Yeah, I can't make that meeting. That's a kind of a keep my job, one of those keep my job days. Mike O'Neil, we lost you. We talked extensively about how, I'm joking, we didn't, Sue Beckmeyer offered to vote again. We also talked a little bit about how we're going to be seeing what will be voted on and have discussion about that ahead of time. How are you feeling? Mike, can you hear us? Mike? All right, he's texting somebody. Mike, talk, we can hear you. Mike, you there? Are we okay to open it up for public comment here? Instead? Let me see, any public comments? No, I don't see any public comment. I will close public comments. Mike, can you hear us? Unmute yourself?
Yeah, I just, my computer, my internet's unstable and it kept dropping in and out. When I came on, there was pictures of nobody there except me. So I, I don't know what was said or even what a motion would be. So if I wasn't there, I probably was nominated to be the voting guy, right?
Well, I was just about to do that, Councilmember O'Neil. And we're down to you, yourself and myself as available and possibly interested in being the delegate for Pacifica for League of Cities on October 9th, a Friday.
Well, I think you can just attend that meeting because I don't know, being the thing's going to be virtual now, I don't know if I want to sit in front of a Zoom screen for three days. You know what I mean? For nine to five or whatever it is. So, Kevin, are you going to be going there at all as city manager? Can we appoint you?
Mike, Sue wants to do it.
Sue wants to do it? Okay, I missed that part. So yes, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And then would you be the alternate then if I, something?
Yeah, I could, I could be the alternate. Yeah, yeah. No, I'm fine. I missed that because you were all blacked out.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Thank you, so it's fine.
Do we have to vote on that? I just think that we just designate the voting delegate is your pro tem Beckmeyer and alternate council member O'Neil.
Yes, I, I've made note that that's the consensus that Beckmeyer is the voting delegate and O'Neil is the alternate.
Okay, all right. Well, with that, I will wish Lorenzo Hines a wonderful new position and, and we will miss you and we will adjourn with all of our energies pushing through the Zoom screen for your wonderful, wonderful years ahead.
Oops. Yep. Good luck there, Lorenzo. Good luck.
All right. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And thank you for everything.
My pleasure. My pleasure.
All right, meeting adjourned at 10:04 p.m. Thank you.